Good morning, County Council. I would like to call to order this County Council meeting of October 9th, 2025. At this point in time, as you are able, please join us in the singing and standing for Oh Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please conduct our roll call?
Counselor Mackey sends his regrets today, Counselor McKay, Counselor Carlton, Counselor Pringle, Counselor McQueen, Counselor Nielsen, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Dickert, Counselor Kentner, Counselor Keveney, Counselor Body, Counselor Gregg, Counselor Milne, Counselor Dobrine, Warden Matrasovs, Counselor Bourdignan.
Present.
Counselor Echols, Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
We have all members and attendants today with the exception of Counselor Mackey.
Thank you. Let us begin by acknowledging with respect that we are gathered on the traditional territory of the Inishnaabe Nation, the people known as the Three Fires, known as the Ojibwe, Odawa, and Potawatomi Nations. We give thanks to the Chipwas Asaugin and the Chipwas of Nauwauq, collectively known as the Asaugin-Ojibwe Nation, the traditional keepers of these lands and waters since time immemorial. In our south lies the traditional territories of the Six Nations of the Grand River and the home of Shonee. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and friendship with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples. At this point in time, I'll put out a call if there are any declarations of interest for our council agenda this morning. Seeing no hands, we will move on to the adoption of the minutes. Item 6A, it's recommended that the minutes of County Council meeting and committee, the whole meeting dated September 25th, 2025, and the resolutions contained therein be adopted as presented. May I ask for a mover? Moved by Counselor Gregg, seconded by Counselor Keveney. Any discussion? Counselor McQueen.
Like you, Madam Warden, and just reviewing the minutes, I was not here at the last meeting, and I'm not here to ask for a reconsideration, but I do want to bring some comments to those minutes with regards to the discussion around Greg Abel's and the report that was in front of council and the decision that County Council made. A couple of things, when the decision to apply for those extra beds was made, it was felt that this body felt that in order to make that facility more efficient, that application for more beds was needed, hence the County Council applied for those beds. The model that was applied for was for a brand-new build with regards to changing the current Rockwood, or sorry, the current Greg Abel's into a long-term, or sort of a, what do you call it, assisted living. That was the model that was applied for. I do think that this body should have a conversation about is that still where this body wants to go? And I know there was a motion passed around 2022 that said we would pause on the redevelopment and the new beds for Greg Abel's until the tender was issued for Rockwood Terrace. That motion has not really been followed through on. Also, the discussion around maybe with the province and with the Long Term Care Minister could be discussed that, like I said, the model that was applied for was a brand-new build, and I think the discussion that happened at last County Council was if you do a brand-new build, you don't get money to build the 66, you only get money to build the additional 62. So, we did have a presentation from a consultant with regards to the model of converting Greg Abel's into assisted living, and there was a revenue generation from that assisted living that would help offset those costs of those extra beds, that you're not getting funding from the province. But I think at some point, and maybe it's the Long Term Care Task Force Committee maybe could look at the opportunity, is that what this body still wants today? Or could we reconsider an application or amended application to build a wing that would incorporate maybe 62 or 64? There's that model of 32 beds per nurse and all that kind of stuff. So I just would like to suggest that from that conversation that happened and other conversations we had over the years, to take it back to maybe that Long Term Care Committee and have that discussion and have a further discussion of this body. I understand that the heavy cost of the Rockwood Terrace, and I think that was a lot of the discussion that happened at the last meeting and how the inflated cost per bed has risen over the last few years. And also with regards to the model that has been applied for Greg Abel's, and it's a heavy cost and it's a lot more involved. But maybe we need a revision on what we are asking for, or at least have that conversation. So I suggest maybe at some point, Madam Warden, that we have this further discussion. As to the motion that was passed back in 2022 or thereabouts, that it be deferred and not, and be considered at this body after the tender was issued for Rockwood Terrace. So we haven't actually followed up on that motion as well. So I'll leave it at that, and it's for conversation, but I think we need a further conversation of maybe what this body would prefer to go to, if that's the different direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay, then I'll call the vote, all those in favor, and that motion is carried. Next, we have, it is item 6B, it is recommended that the closed session committee, the whole minutes of dated September 25th, 2025, be adopted as provided. Moved by the Deputy Warden, seconded by Counselor Kentner. Any discussion? All those in favor, and that motion is carried. And the final set of minutes is item 6C, which is the Long Term Care, Long Term Care Committee of Management Meeting Minutes. It's recommended that the Long Term Care Committee of Management, sorry, Long Term Care Committee of Management Meeting Minutes dated September 18th, 2025, be adopted as presented, and that the following resolutions contained therein be endorsed. And that is number one, the report LTCRCM 1325 regarding a Long Term Care Director Update be received for information. And number two, that report LTCRCM 1425 regarding the Long Term Care Operational Report dated June 15th to August 14th be received for information. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Carlton. It's now on the floor for discussion, so. Ah, there your Director Cornell. The floor is yours.
Oops, thank you very much, Warden, and through you, good morning, County Council. As the Warden has already summarized, there were two reports at this meeting. One is the Director's Update and a couple of highlights from that. Just like to announce that Terry Fisher has stepped into the role as Executive Director at Rockwood Terrace, and we're really pleased to make that announcement and welcome her to that meeting, while Karen Kraus steps into the sole focus of operational readiness, getting ready for the move into the new Rockwood. Another couple of highlights, just wanted to mention that we are well underway and preparing for the upcoming, which is really now here, respiratory season, and are actively getting preparations in place for the influenza and COVID vaccine clinics that we offer for the residents, for designated care partners, and for team members. And finally, just wanted to highlight that we had a great tour of the three homes with Warden Matrasov, CAO Schertzur, and Deputy CAO Lobley. We had a chance to go to all three of the homes and saw something different at each of them, and it was a really great day for us to be able to connect with the team members and the residents, and for the team to be able to highlight some of their colorant stories for the senior leadership. The operational report covers the period of June 15th to August 14th and highlights a number of areas that are noted, and if there's any questions about those, happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. We do have another item coming afterwards, but with regards to what has been moved and seconded on the floor for discussion, are there any questions for Director Cornell? Okay, we'll go over to Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you for your condensed version of that day. It was a great day, and there's a lot of concrete and block and a lot of space, for sure. And I don't know, through you, Madam Warden, to Director Cornell, you spoke a little bit about when it's completed, about having full capacity. I don't know if you want to be in touch base a little bit, because there's a certain timeframe for funding, and I have a follow-up to that that I noticed somewhere else, but. Sorry.
Thank you, and through you, Warden Matrasov, I might, that is a topic of the next set of minutes, so if you're good with waiting, I'll make sure that I cover that off in the next summary.
Okay, so any others for this particular set of minutes? Okay, I don't see any further hands up nor online, so I'll call the question, all those in favor, and that motion is carried. Okay, so if you just don't go far. Item 6D, it's recommended that the Long Term Care Redevelopment Planning Task Force Meeting Minutes dated September 24th, 2025 be adopted as presented, and the following resolutions contained therein be endorsed, and there are a list of eight resolutions that were contained in the minutes that have been duly circulated to both council and the public. So I will ask for a mover and a seconder there. Moved by Counselor Dobrine, seconded by Counselor McQueen. It's now on the floor for discussion. Director Cornell.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs, and through you. We also had an opportunity at this meeting to have a tour through the construction site with the members of the Redevelopment Task Force, and it was a little damp, but I have not yet toured where it isn't raining or snowing, but that day will come, I'm sure. But it is exciting. It's dot roof, and there's beams going up, and you can start to see what it's going to look like, so that was a really exciting opportunity. And the next time, it won't be wet, and there'll probably be lights, and it'll be even better. So as the Warden had mentioned, there is a series of resolutions that we discussed and went through at the meeting. The first is around single sourcing of beds, bedside tables, overbed tables, lifts, tubs, sole sourcing, food production management support for the new Rockwood Terrace. And we had a really good discussion with the committee at that meeting about our practices and processes for single source, why we do it, when, how do we vet it? And so it was a good discussion. We already do a sole source, nope, we do a single source for our lift equipment, for example, and that is to maintain some standardization across the three homes. We have maintenance contracts with the provider that provides the equipment. We have the same equipment at all three homes. There are personalized slings, for example, that go with lift equipment, and we want to make sure that for safety reasons for the resident and for the team members, that we're not having to kind of figure out which sling goes with which brand of lift equipment, as an example. So we had that discussion. The discussion that Counselor McQueen is mentioning is the one regarding the operational readiness, estimated budget impacts, and there was some good, very good discussion around that. And as we anticipate the timelines now, and these can change and be flexible, and so we're preparing for that, but as we're anticipating, the move is January 2027, which means there's going to be some expenses that kind of overlap between 2026 and 2027. So we need to onboard and recruit a number of staff. Estimated right now is approximately 47 new team members, and there is a link to a chart that outlines our proposed staffing complement. All of these details need to be fine-tuned and submitted to the Ministry of Long Term Care for inspection. We aren't able to make that kind of a move without two inspections that have passed by the Ministry of Long Term Care, and then we're able to make that move. So the onboarding and recruitment of new team members, we're onboarding them, and then we're moving to a brand-new building. So we also need to ensure that there's education for the new team members, education and training on the different services, the layout of the building, things as simple as where they used to go get these piece of equipment, these linens, et cetera, are all going to be new, so we need to account for that. The other areas that are, that we've considered in terms of operating both spaces is a month of additional maintenance personnel to support the dual operations during the transition. So it's winter in Durham, so we'll need to be doing snow removal at the existing Rockwood, snow removal at the new Rockwood, for example. Mentioned recruitment costs for proposed new staff, additional hours for housekeeping personnel, so we need to make sure the new home is in tip-top shape, and we want to be cleaning the existing home, and there'll be a period of time where people are living in both for a day or two. Supplies is another area where the new building needs to be turnkey-ready to go. So when we move the residents, and at this stage, we're planning to do that move in one day, so hopefully it's a light winter. But we will be, even though it's just around the corner, we won't be, we will be bringing in transportation to, we can't, if it was June, maybe we could wheel some people over and have a little parade, but that will not be the case in January. So I don't think so. Some might want to do it, but. And so we need to have one month's worth of essential supplies, including medical supplies, paper products, food and cleaning, chemicals, as I mentioned, snow removal services, heat, hydro, water, fire protection for both buildings. We've also included security, so we'll need to have security at the new build while we're waiting to make the transition, and then when we've made the move, we'll need to have security on the existing Rockwood Terrace. And of course, the purchase of new linens, dishes, glassware, and cutlery. So we are anticipating those costs and those services and resources need to be in place. As I mentioned, it is a bit of a moving target. When we get closer, we'll have a much better sense of the time, so if the move happens a little later, there may not be an impact to 2026 at all. If the move, so just to know that there is a moving target there, but as we see it right now, we're planning for that anticipated move date. Oh, wait, there's more, there's more. And then finally, and if there's questions about this, I will defer to CAO Schertzur. CAO Schertzur brought a report regarding an update on the tender results and cost-sharing breakdown of the Southeast Street project, and there was some discussion around that as well. And I'll hand it back to you, Warden Matrasov.
Okay, CAO Schertzur, did you want to do any introductory comments before I put it out for questions?
Sure, I'll just, just to build on Jen's comments about the South Street East project and that amended agreement is actually is part of the council package today. So just a refresher for this, there is a stormwater system under South Street East that needs upgrades in order to handle the runoff from the Rockwood Terrace, as well as the Rockwood early works that we call, based on the South Street East extension, the Rock Street extension that was required for, to support this build. The current infrastructure is undersized, it lacks sufficient slope, and could pose then further flood risks if not upgraded. So West Gray and its consultant proposed a two-phased replacement of the storm sewer from Elgin to County Street. So Phase A is currently underway as we speak. Phase B will start next year. All of that will be completed by the fall of next year, which aligns with the Rockwood Terrace redevelopment, as Director Cornell just noted in terms of timing. Under the Rockwood Early Works Cost Sharing Agreement, West Gray and Gray County committed to sharing the cost of the downstream improvements, and earlier this year, County Council approved an upset limit of 1.7 million for its share, the final amount determined post-tender. Contract was awarded to Moorefield Excavating by West Gray. That was the lowest bidder. The total project cost is just over $3 million. West Gray's share is about 1.9 million, Gray County's share came in at 1.2 million, so approximately just under, just over, or under $500,000, based on the upset limit that was established earlier. So based on that, there's a, it's broken down into two phases, so 780,000 this year, 443,000 next year. That will be funded from the Rockwood Terrace redevelopment project, and there's sufficient funds within that overall project to cover those costs. And so as I noted, an amending agreement has been prepared, which is included in today's council's agenda. Oops.
Okay, so we'll go to questions. We'll start with the Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, Jen, for the report. The notion of the single sourcing, it always makes me just a little bit nervous when we're going to a sole or single source, you know, to buy anything, really. But I've had a number of conversations with Jen and some other members of her staff, and there are a host of really good reasons why we need to do this. Patient or resident safety is of paramount importance, and that is the primary reason why we should do what is being proposed, and I want to thank Jen for comforting my mind, so to speak, that we're doing the right thing, so thank you, Jen.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden, just to follow up, and thanks for your response there, Jen. You just, I guess you had mentioned something about full occupancy in order to get full funding, and the reason I raise that, I was through Steiner just last week, and he just opened a new long-term care home there, and it has a sign of beds available or something like that, and I thought when you said that time, we have to get around 100% occupancy to get our full funding, and that was the part I was raising.
Thank you, Counselor McQueen, and through you, Warden Matrasovs. Thank you for raising that. In our work with Colliers project managers that are helping us get ready for operational readiness, because there is a great deal of regulations that go along with that, they have briefed us very early in this process that the occupancy expectation by the ministry is to be at full occupancy in 14 days of the move, which is, I have concerns about that level of expectation. We are moving potentially 85 to 100 residents from existing Rockwood. There'll be a time where we stop moving in new residents as we, as the date of the move comes closer, so it's hard to say, it's winter, it's hard to say what our occupancy of the existing Rockwood will be, but probably around 90 residents to 100. They will make a move, along with 189 to 225 team members, to figure out how to live and work in a brand-new building that they have had fairly limited experience working in, and then move in another 28 to 35 residents in 14 days. It's a, I think it's an unrealistic expectation, and it's something that I have raised with our association, Advantage Ontario, and might be something we discuss as a potential delegation topic at the upcoming Roma. It's not a dignified expectation. This is a, making a move into long-term care is one of the most significant decisions and experiences that someone has to make for themselves or someone that they love. And we, we know from experience that when the move-in is done well, that the experience living in the home is much better than when the move-in feels like a chaotic experience. And there's some, we have some big concerns about what that experience might be for those 25 or 30, 25 to 35 people moving in two at a time, two a day, essentially it's two a day, maybe even three a day. So thank you for raising that, and this is something that we will bring to either Committee of Management, Redevelopment Task Force, County Council, wherever the appropriate place is to bring this again, I will be hoping to bring this forward for further discussion.
Thank you, and thank you, Madam Warden. That's the part, 14 days did not seem realistic, and so, I mean, maybe, maybe more like two months might seem more, and I don't know if you talked to other new homes that are opening, if they've had some deviation or some flexibility on that part, but I just thought it was interesting that signs that beds available from a brand-new home, so thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments for these minutes? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands online or in the room, so I'll call the question, all those in favor, and that motion is carried. Thank you very much, Director Cornell. We do not have any closed meeting matters to discuss nor reports, so we can go straight to item number nine, which is the bylaws. It's recommended that bylaws 525225 and 525325 be introduced and taken as read first, second, and third time, finally passed, signed by the Warden and the Clerk, sealed with the seal of the corporation, and engrossed into the bylaw book. Number one, 525225, a bylaw to amend the infrastructure responsibility and cost-sharing agreement for the Rockwood Terrace early works. And number two, 525325, a bylaw to confirm all actions and proceedings of the council. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Dickert and seconded by Counselor Echols. Any discussion? All those in favor, and that motion is carried. Thank you. News and celebrations, we've got two different news items to come forth from staff, we'll begin with those. First up, Director Taylor, I believe you have some exciting news to share with us.
Yeah, good morning, Madam Warden and members of County Council. So today I have some very good news to share with you on behalf of the Plan Department. I'd like you to join me in congratulating Cassandra Dillman, the county's intermediate planner, who's sitting in the back here with us today, who recently passed her professional exam to become a registered professional planner, or you might know the acronym RPP. For those that might be unfamiliar, registered professional planners in Ontario are certified as such after obtaining the required education, logging years' worth of work experience, and passing both an ethics and a final professional examination. I'm sure there's probably a joke there about taking years to become a planner and going through the process, but I'm not going to touch that one. So once these requirements, once these requirements have been met, planners can use the official RPP title and can more easily be qualified to give professional opinion evidence at tribunals. After certification, planners need to uphold these requirements by not only acting in the public interest, but they're also bound by the Professional Code of Practice and are required to complete a defined amount, required to complete a defined amount of professional learning credits each year. So once again, I'd like to congratulate Cassandra on this remarkable achievement.
Excellent news indeed, and I think it's always a healthy reminder about what goes in behind our professional and certified planners and all the other professions that are guided. We hear a lot from long-term care, we know all the processes. planners and, and all the other professions that are guided. We hear a lot from long-term care, we know all the processes that you have to go through there. Early childhood education, there are so many fields that, that we see here among the staff of Gray County that require a lot of dedication to their own profession in order to deliver an outstanding service as they do. So with that, we have some more exciting news. I think the Rock Band AC, A, B, C, D is here. And I witnessed a wonderful beginning of an event that you're going to share with us. It was a fantastic effort, and so many people were so thrilled to be there, so take it away, please, Director Shaw.
Good morning, Warden and county council. I'd like to ask Tara Cockrell to come up to the podium. Tara's our early learning and childcare manager. Each year, we provide, or we receive funding from the province in order to host professional learning events for all of our early on educators and all of our childhood educators in Gray County. So Tara and our team put together an amazing event on September twenty-sixth and are here to share some detail.
Good morning, council. As Anne Marie said, we had a great event on September twenty-sixth, just wanted to share some information about that. So as I've shared in the past, our early childhood educators play an essential role in supporting the growth, learning and wellbeing of young children. Through their dedication and professionalism, ECEs provide safe, nurturing and engaging environments to help children develop the skills and confidence they need to thrive. On September twenty-sixth, we prepared for nearly three hundred team members from the early learning sector to join the ELCC team in Owen Sound for a day of professional learning. It was a day filled with conversation, collaboration and a lot of fun. This third annual Growing Great Kids event has grown so much that we had to host the day in two locations at both the Bay Shore and at the Best Western. That worked great. Some of our topics included special workshops on nutrition for our cooks and nutritionists in the childcare programs. Maker space and risky play sessions from ECCDC that you see here. We got to witness how to incorporate wood burning into the school age program, which was really interesting to learn how that could be done safely. We had mindful Mike, Mike Massey come up to talk to both sessions in the morning and in the afternoon about being kind to your mind. Very important for all of us, but especially people working in this sector. And during the lunch break, we had a lot of fun as well, everything from cornhole, giant Jenga and our very, very popular giant think-o game. We also acknowledged ECE Appreciation Day that takes place on October twenty-first, an opportunity to acknowledge and celebrate the valuable contributions of these educators in our communities. I'd like to thank Warden Matrasovs and Director Shaw for providing opening remarks at each location. And this event would not happen without the organization's support and creativity of the small but mighty early learning and childcare teams. Some of them are here with me today, some of them are providing programming right now. So again, a special thank you to our team, Ashley, Kristen, Lori, Jill, Stacy, Katie, Kim, Julie and Rachel. Leading up to ECE Appreciation Day, we encourage everyone to take an opportunity to thank ECEs in our community for their commitment and the positive impact they have on children, families and the broader community.
Thank you very much, Manager Cockrell, and thank you to the entire crew that put that effort together. It, it was very clear from the moment I walked through the doors that this was a well-executed, organized day that, as, as Manager Cockrell said, was so popular that there was actually a spillover into the Best Western as well. So how fantastic was that? People were looking so forward to connecting with each other that, that day, but the content of the programming that you provided was outstanding. So thank you so much for all that, that you're truly in your roles, you're helping others achieve more than outstanding work in their own roles, so it can't happen without you. Thank you. Okay, so with that then, we'll put it out to county council members for news and celebrations that you'd like to share. We'll begin with councillor Kentner.
Thank you, Madam Matrasovs, Warden Matrasovs. Kind of shocked a little bit this morning, only recently did I write a letter endorsing the need for a new public school in Miford. But we learned today through the press that Miford is getting a new K to grade three daycare on the former track and field property on Aken Street, opposite the former Georgian Bay Secondary School. And as residents of Miford, Shirley and I are both very well aware of how badly this is needed. The, the new community school is bursting at the seams, and all of this because Miford is truly growing.
Thank you, and I'll look to other members to share news. We'll go to councillor McKay.
Thank you, Warden. Just to bring you up to date, I had some good news from my mayor and your fellow councillor. He's back in Ontario, which is a blessing. And he sends all his best. He has a number of appointments that he has to attend and he's going to keep me up to date and it kind of opens your eyes to know how much a mayor does when the deputy mayor has to take over the position of mayor, so. Just might have to do twice as much work, but anyway, I'm glad to do it for him and hope I can help him out a bit on recuperating and getting back to work again, so. Thanks. Keep him, keep him in your blessings.
Thank you very much, councillor McKay, and indeed, I'm sure it's reassuring that you're there in the driver's seat to be able to assist, so that truly that must be a comforting message back to the whole Mackey family. And certainly on behalf of all of council, we continue to, to keep him in our thoughts and are excited to hear these, these news, news updates of progress. So thank you very much for sharing that. And other, we'll go over to councillor Boddy.
Thank you, Warden. Last, no, one day last week, Deputy Mayor Greg and I had the opportunity of welcoming the Ontario Lieutenant Governor Dumont to, to Owen Sound as she got off the boat from the HMCS. I'll pick up those in the right order, Her Majesty's Canadian ship, yes, Margaret Brook, and we had a nice little, nice little visit with Lieutenant Governor. We look forward to her returning to the area, which she is very keen to do at some point, given her experience that she was up here. It's also pretty special to welcome the Canadian Navy ship in the Owen Sound harbor. They're touring through the upper lakes, really in a recruiting mission. We got to go out for a little, little boat ride on Monday, and it's an unbelievable piece of technology from, from, from a guy that likes to sail on a nineteen eighty sailboat. It's, it was pretty amazing and great crew, great, great to have them in the area. Anyone's got any questions about the ship, ask me after. Thanks.
Thank you, and we'll go to councillor McQueen.
Well, I think it must be mentioned that our beloved Toronto, or Toronto Blue Jays won last night in New York, which I think was a defeat in itself. I'm one of those that remember back in nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three of the run that they had back then, which was pretty exciting. And remember back then how it was sort of a unity through Canada at that time. I think this is again, another opportunity for our team, the Canadian team, to even bring us more faith in our team and our country and everything else, because it is only one ball team in, in Canada that represents us and they're at the, at the, at the head of the, at the head of the part of maybe winning it all for the World Series. So let's cheer on our Blue Jays and and certainly look for some good times in the next few weeks for sure, because that was an interesting time in ninety-two, ninety-three.
Okay, thank you very much for sharing that baseball news and to the deputy warden who wants to remember that wants us to remember that hockey is always forever in our hearts as well. And with that, we're going to go to councillor Borden Yaw, and then we'll go to councillor Dobrine.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Good morning, county council. Just a bit of good news on the physician recruiting front. It's, you know, I know it's an effort done by not just all nine member municipalities, but throughout the province. So our town's physician recruitment working group has been successful in luring a doctor, getting a doctor. Dr. Sonia Bali will be starting in the town of the Blue Mountains. I believe there's a reception for her tomorrow. She's going to be working at the Blue Mountains Community Health Centre on King Street in Thornbury. She's worked across the province and across the country, and she'll support patients not only in the town of Blue Mountains, at our long-term care facilities in Thornbury and Miford and throughout the Miford Hospital. So it's, it's good news all around for for our area and into Miford and all those serviced by the Miford Hospital. So I just wanted to share that piece of information with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, and next we'll go to councillor Dobrine.
Thank you. Good morning, Warden and county council and visitors. I just wanted to let everyone know that Southgate is going to be enjoying a Diwali event tomorrow evening at the Dundalk Legion. It's a celebration of light, unity and community spirit. It is a free event, but registration is required. It is being held at the Legion, as I said, in Dundalk from six thirty to eight thirty.
Thank you very much. Other news and celebrations. Back over to councillor McKay.
Thank you. Just to bring you up to date, through you, Warden, if you have any complaints you'd like to bring forward to me, you can text them to me or email them to me and I'll be going, I'm a director on the Good Roads, and this morning I heard that we're invited to sit with the Minister of Transportation, have lunch with them, so I'm hoping I can sit right next to them and maybe keep them from eating and ask a whole bunch of questions. More around Sixth and Tenth Highway and a couple of other ones, entrance permits, but if you have any concerns, I don't want to keep them too long, but I know we have a lot of concerns out there from the county, but anyway, if you got anything you want to ask, I'll ask.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other news and celebrations to share? Okay, not seeing any further hands up. Okay, all right then, that allows us then to look for a German, so may ask for a mover and a second. Moved by the deputy warden, seconded by councillor Nielsen, all those in favor? And that motion is carried. We'll give a moment to switch over.